Finance committee meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Conklin?
Here.
Councilmember Clifford?
Here.
Councilmember McFadden?
Here.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Thank you, and we are joined by Councilmember Hague and Councilmember Ortiz. So introductory number 386, authorizing a professional service agreement for the employee assistance program. Are there any questions on introductory number 386? If not, then a motion to adopt?
Some move?
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 387, authorizing agreements for drug and alcohol testing. Are there questions on introductory number 387? I do have one of the tests administered on an annual basis. How many potential employees fail the drug or alcohol test, and if so, what happens?
I don't have the numbers for those who have failed, so I can get that to council. I can get that report to council. But what happens is if it's a new hire, that person is not selected for employment. If it's part of the background, they've failed the background. If it is an employee that currently works for us, we have a process in place that they are referred to, they get a referral and get an opportunity, they get second chances. And it depends on whether it's a union employee or not a union employee, what the process would be, because it's also captured in the union agreements.
Is there any differentiation between, you know, obviously, there's a whole lot of difference whether you've got some marijuana in your blood, which can stay for up to 30 days, is my understanding, or some really harder drugs? Is there any differentiation in how you treat those people?
When they're referred to the, referred to E and I, E and I would make that assessment, what is needed for that individual? Was it that they just smoked marijuana? The city doesn't make that assessment, they do, and they send back that referral. So it could be as simple as the person has to wait the 30 days until it's out of their system, and then they report back to us and make a recommendation, because that individual would also go for follow-up testing. But all of that comes from the referral agency.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Yeah.
If not, a motion to adopt?
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Tassie, when you submit that information, would you please not only say how many, but if they're, you know, retested or given another chance, or they're just automatically not qualified for employment?
Yes.
Thank you. Int introductory number 388, amending city charter section 6-71.8 with respect to the call for veterans exemption from taxes. And as there is a public hearing scheduled at 5:00, that should be a motion to consider. Are there any questions on intro 388? If not, a motion to consider?
Some moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 389, amending city charter section 6-71.9 with respect to exemption from taxes for persons with disabilities and limited incomes. It's also a public hearing, so a motion to consider would be appropriate. Questions on intro 389?
Move to consider?
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 409, additioning the New York State Superintendent of Financial Services to revoke the anti-arson application requirement. And this is mainly a cleanup to existing law. So are there any questions on introductory number 409? If not, a motion to adopt?
Some moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 412, authorizing receipt of a grant and appropriations to fund renovations and upgrades at the Central and Monroe Branch libraries. Questions on introductory number 412? I'd just like to point out that these are very much needed repairs and renovations being done to our libraries.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 413, authorizing an agreement and funding for 2017 StepJam. Questions on introductory number 413?
Move to adopt?
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 414, amending city charter section 6-71.2 with respect to veterans exemptions from taxes. And also a public hearing on this at 5:00, so a motion to consider.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I say aye, carries five zero. Int introductory number 410, authorizing agreements and appropriating funds for the Emergency Solutions Grant. Questions on intro 410? If not, a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Pages got mixed up. Well, we'll get to it then. Okay, all right, all righty. My pages are out of order. There we go, that's why. There are no additional questions for finance, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
That would be fun for your last two months, right?
That's probably why they get staple together.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the Business and Economic Development Committee to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Spahl?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Thank you. I would note that we're also joined by councilmembers Clifford, Conklin, Hague, McFadden, and Ortiz. We will begin with introductory number 390, which is authorizing a loan agreement for the 103 Court Street redevelopment project. There were a number of questions on this. It looks like we've received answers on most of those, but I'm guessing there may be some additional questions. Are there questions from council?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Conklin?
Thank you, Vice President Miller. I had asked the question about the timing, and the answer was that the city got this request in August, but this is November, so I guess my question is, still, why has it taken so long to have the requests come before council?
Because it has to go through the loan committee. It has to go through a process before it can get to council. And so even though the request comes in, it needs to be vetted by our loan committee, as well as law department, and that goes through a munis process.
Thank you.
We also have one change, Councilmember Miller. Two of the units will be 50% MFI and below. That is a new change. So six units will be 120 and below, offered three units under 80%, and two units 50% or below.
I'll be providing a substitute transmittal so that the transmittal matches with that. The legislation isn't that specific, so the legislation won't be changing.
Okay, and that still is the total of 11 units, which is roughly 10% of the total?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Spahl? Okay, there was a request that we hold this item in anticipation of that new transmittal.
Hold the item?
Hold it.
I didn't get the...
There was a request...
It sounds like we're getting something new. Are we getting something else from you guys before Tuesday?
Yeah, the change is two of the units are going to be 50% or below MFI. So I really don't see any reason to hold this item. I think we should move it forward, only because this will be just something that's changed through the typewriter.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Patterson?
Is it possible that we could get the new transmittal today?
Can't answer that, Bridget, can we get it?
To reflect that particular change?
I could certainly provide it to the clerk's office at the end of committee meetings and the public hearing.
Well, I think we kind of want to vote. If the concern is that we don't have the transmittal, and that's why it's being asked to be held, if we can get the updated transmittal...
The transmittal says that there will be 25%. I looked at the transmittal.
I'm wondering what the harm is to hold it until we have everything in front of us, and we have a meeting on Tuesday. It's only Thursday, you've got time. Also, I wanted to ask whether the affordable units were always part of the plan or came in late. So there's some questions we have.
So if you have questions, ask your questions.
Well, I'm asking them.
Okay.
And I'm also requesting that we hold it, and we have a chance to really talk about this further. And I think that's council's prerogative. So if you don't want to, you don't have to, but I'm asking the chair of the committee to hold it till we have some more questions. There are questions that we have, that we have to ask.
Okay, so...
So there may be some things that we...
Ask your question.
I'll ask them either in writing or right now if I want to. So I'm not, this is what we do. We're supposed to ask questions, lovely. So I'm going to ask some questions, and that is, one question I have is this. Were the affordable units, so this is the first time we've seen this, right? But apparently, it's been in NBD since August. So I'm not blaming the developer, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying, we have information that's been out there that we're seeing for the first time. So were there affordable units always in the plan?
No, I think when we originally got this, there weren't any affordable units.
Okay.
And what we strive to do with all of our projects, if we're loaning money or we're doing a pilot, is make sure that there's a certain number that are affordable.
Okay, so there was no request to the city when the first plans were done? Is that correct? Because there were no affordable units?
Not when we first saw it.
So what came to the city? Maybe that's the way we did...
What came to the city was a request for a loan.
With no affordable units in it?
No, no, no. Once the request for the loan kicked in, that triggers NBD to say, now we need affordable units for this project.
Okay, so you have a developer who's already broken ground. He's got a project underway, so we need to be able to really be careful about. So I'm just trying to find out the timing, what the request was. Other people have issues about this. I just want to make sure that we're careful.
So let me be clear about what happened here.
Okay, that would be helpful. The timing would be helpful, and what we got would be helpful.
Right, so the city got a grant from the state to do a promenade. When we got the grant to do a promenade from the state, this particular land was owned by the Farish Foundation.
Right.
And the developer had purchased the land from the Farish Foundation, not knowing that the city also had a project to do the promenade, which was a separate and distinct project. When the developer decided to come to the city and talk to us about that particular project on the Farish land, we informed them that we also had a project that was going on that same land, well, on the city's portion of the land.
Right.
And so then we began to talk about the timing and the timeframe of how to comply with our state obligations to do the promenade in a specific timeframe, but also allow the developer to be able to develop their project. And so we came to city council at that point in time to work with the developer and get permission from city council to have the developer do the promenade, which is a city, which is city property and publicly owned property. And then also, while they were doing that, they laid a foundation for their particular project. During their financing of their project, it became apparent that they needed some gap financing.
Okay.
They came to the city in August to ask us for a loan for the gap financing.
Okay.
In order to bring it to city council, as we have done with everything else that we do, we do a proper vetting process. That means that it goes through underwriting. That means that it goes to law. It goes through a loan committee that we established about three years ago, because we wanted to make sure that all of the components, when it comes down to these types of loans, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. There is nothing different here. Once that happened, then we put in legislation to city council to allow for this loan or this gap financing to go forward. In order for that to happen, whenever a developer asks the city for dollars, and we're using public dollars, we ask them to have affordable units so that everyone can participate and be able to live in these new particular projects if they're utilizing public dollars. We all know that the city has a significant number of people that are poor or below income, and we wanted everybody to be able to live in these new particular housing projects that we're doing. So we asked the developer, in order to get the $1.5 million that they're asking for in a loan, to do affordable units. That's not new, that's not different. What happened today was Councilmember Patterson wanted some specific goals when it came down to the affordable units. He wanted some units to be 50% of AMFI. And so we went to, they had a meeting with the developer before the council meeting to establish that. And so that's what we're here doing.
So I appreciate all that. Here's my concern. This is all new to us. So Councilmember Patterson expressed some concerns at an agenda. He sent questions in, or we knew he had concerns. We didn't know you were talking about, this would have been really helpful. So all I'm saying is, we're getting caught up. You're helping us get caught up. So what we're talking about in terms of legislation right now, today, is not what we have here. I think it's council's prerogative and obligation, actually obligation, not just prerogative, to say what happened? Why did it happen? Maybe thank you to the developer for stepping up and seeing the concern? What went on? Rather than just saying, you know, we'll get you something and we talked about it. It's not a problem for us to ask a question so it's clear, because we have to answer to other people as well. So I hear what you're saying. This is very helpful, I appreciate it. Maybe other people have questions as well. Carol Lee may have questions, other people. It's a change from what we have in front of us. I think that means that we have the right and the obligation to ask a question. Whether it took longer this time or not, I don't know. I don't really care. But I think that we have the right to ask these questions, obviously. So I'm going to just, I'm not going to talk about it anymore. I'm asking a question. You've answered it, so thank you.
Nobody has a problem with answering your questions. Just ask the question.
Councilmember Conklin?
Whoops. Having all kinds of problems today. So my question has to do with the affordable units, and we've been tying this in with loans, which I happen to strongly approve of. But I guess my question is, this one has got a 15-year limit. Is that the policy we're employing on that condition? I know we did it with College Town. What, how many years was that one for affordable units?
I would, I can't answer that. Brian, do you have?
I thought it was permanent.
Well, no. I wasn't here, but...
I was.
We'll go back and find out so we can get you...
I just, you know, is it a policy where we say 15 years, or 10 years, or 20 years? I think that if we're going to be imposing a time limit on affordability, that it should be fairly common anytime we attach that condition. So that's my basic question, is why the 15 years?
We can go back and look at it, but generally, with affordable housing tax credits financing, it is usually a 15-year tax credit. So when we did, you know, Josanna, you know, El Camino, Mildred Johnson, all of those are...
Mildred Johnson, I remember the 15, because that's when it becomes, people become able to buy the houses.
Right, right. So I don't, we can go back and look at that and find out.
It would just be helpful in the future, how we tie that into a certain year limit.
This is a market rate project. We usually, or at least since I've been here, there's been 10% on market rate projects when we institute affordable units. The developer agreed to the 15. So we are trying to push the envelope... So, we are trying to push the envelope here. You probably will see other...
But the 15 isn't for the percentage, for the number of years they'll be affordable apartments.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Okay, I'm helping my distinguished and esteemed council member who has lost her voice. General contractors are to adhere to hiring goals. What about the subcontractors? For the MWBE requirements, I'm sorry.
The city's requirements for MWBE on a project?
Do the subcontractors, as well as the general contractors, have to adhere to those goals?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Was there another question?
Yeah, so I would love to hear, maybe Bea could give us just the number of units. Just give us all the information you can about the units, the cost, the change, what the 25% looks like, how many of them. And I'm happy to just, if you want to just roll them off, I'm happy to listen. Again, there's been a change, and we'd like to know, I'd like to know what the changes are.
Well, the developers here, when you say 25%, I don't know what you're asking.
Well, didn't you just...
25% of what?
Michael, didn't you just make a... Affordable units.
No, we have...
Elaine is asking what the AMI and what's the affordable units, and what was the change that was agreed to
Earlier today.
with Councilmember Patterson.
Right, when the rest of us weren't there. So, I'm just trying to catch up a little bit. So, that would be great. Just read them off to us.
How many units will be under 120%?
Total number of units.
Yeah.
And what...
111 units.
I'm not worried about the market rate. Those are going to be fine, just affordables.
111 total units for this project.
How many total units?
111.
Okay.
Six will be 120 AMI and below.
And what is that range? What's the rate?
That is, as far as the... You want the...
Number, the dollar?
For the rent?
Yeah.
Let me see. Oh, I have that right here.
Maybe it's not there?
Yeah.
I could probably...
15, 15.65 for one bedroom.
Is that for a two-bedroom or a one-bedroom?
One bedroom.
15.65 for one bedroom?
You know what? I'm going to have to get back to you. I don't have it right in front of me.
It's on our answer sheet.
Oh, great. The new one? The new numbers, your new numbers?
For the average monthly rent? That information is on the answers that we were provided.
I think Elaine is specifically talking about the affordable units and the rent.
Oh, the affordable.
So, the 11 affordable units.
Got it.
Okay.
Six of them at 120 of the AMI. She wants to know what that dollar amount is.
Yeah, I can get that to you.
The developer's here, right?
Could you?
Can he?
Can you guys give us?
Give us the answer. That makes sense to wait if he's here.
It's like the meeting earlier. I mean, you guys did some good work today. I'm trying to figure out what happened, that's all. Just push the button so the light is on, Kevin. Thanks.
Sorry, I'm just reading from my phone.
That's okay.
Sorry. So, the units that are going to be 50% AMI, the monthly rent for a one-bedroom will be $522 a month.
That makes sense.
80% AMI, a one-bedroom will be $935 a month. A one-bedroom at 120% AMI is $1482 a month.
Okay. And Kevin, do you have any two-bedroom affordables?
We do. The two-bedroom at 80% AMI is $1,037. The two-bedroom at 120% AMI is $1,654, and that's it.
Okay. And so, the one-bedroom, that's $522, how many of them are there?
Two.
Two.
This makes much more sense to me, thank you. Does that match what you have, Michael? I'm satisfied, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to ask my questions.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any other...
Actually, the law department just brought down the amendment, and so, you can amend it right now if you'd like. Andrea's copying it.
Okay, we will do that as soon as she comes back. Councilmember Clifford, did you have a question?
I do, thank you, Vice President Miller. I just was asking about the Imagine Monroe pilot. And you referred to a special pilot that's based on the jobs-plus schedule. Can you just explain what that is, what that means?
Yes, let's bring Anne De Silva up to answer that question. But in a nutshell, it's an increase of 10% every year. But Anne, would you like to come up?
For the record, Jerry Golden on behalf of Court Street LLC, Rochester LLC. The jobs-plus program is a standard program under the uniformed tax exemption policy for COMITA. And it provides for an abatement over a 10-year period typically that starts, steps down from 90%, 80%, 70% in each year for a 10-year period until that abatement burns off. So, this is not a super special pilot or a custom pilot. It's a jobs-plus pilot.
Gotcha. All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, are there any other questions from council? Okay, hearing no further questions. We do have an amendment to this introductory number 390. The amendment states that as a condition of the loan, 10% of the residential units shall be rented to households that meet the following: median family income limits, six units under 120% MFI, three units under 80% MFI, and two units under 50% MFI. And everyone should have a copy of this now. The amendment text is underlined. I would make a motion to amend introductory number 390.
So, moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of amending introductory number 390, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye say aye. Motion passes for zero. And now, let's vote on introductory number 390 as amended. Is there a motion to approve 390 as amended? Aye? Somebody say amend a motion?
So, moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye say aye. Motion carries for zero, thank you. We will now move on to introductory number 391. Authorizing an application and agreement for a grant under round five of the Restore New York Communities Initiative. There will be a public hearing held at 5:00 PM after the committee meetings are completed. So, we will be looking for a motion to consider introductory number 391. Are there questions on 391? 391, yes. Okay. Okay. Since the buildings are side by side, for many of them, are they coordinating the design so that they will have somewhat of a coordinated and cohesive look?
We don't have that level of detail yet, but we want to make sure that it's coordinated and things don't look out of whack.
Okay.
Particularly on me.
So, there would still be, in addition to what we're being requested to do, there'll still be site plan review and the other kinds of design reviews that normally...
Yeah, there's a whole lot of work still to do. This Restore New York is used to spark the development, interior demo, exterior demo, but it'll be used to spark the development on Main Street.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, the second question is for the property at 176 through 182 East Main Street. Does the person currently own the property? This LLC that's listed?
Yes, he's here.
Okay.
Bob? Yeah.
Okay, and for that same property, is there already a prospective tenant for that?
Well, Bob can speak to that, but one of his plans is to do a doggy daycare upstairs. But you can come to the mic and speak.
Okay.
Is it on?
Okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay. We have about 300 employees in downtown, and we know that there's a lot of apartments going on. The family dollar obviously is a tenant. They have three-year options on it. So, we purchased it, myself and Mark Shortino purchased it. And our goal is to make it on the top floors, a doggy daycare. We think it's an obvious place that will be good, not only for my employees, but for a lot of the people in the area.
Okay. Thank you. Before you leave, let me just see if there's another question. Okay, so you're fine with that one? But you want to hear about the other ones? Because this is only his. Okay. All right. Mr. Bartosz, thank you. I think we're done with you. And now, the next question is on the 186 East Main property. Is there someone here from 186 East Main?
Yes, Patrick?
Can you come up?
Thanks. Okay, the question on this one, while you're walking up, is has this project already been factored in for the project that is including the Traffic Bureau and the new Social Security Office? Is that in the same building?
No.
No.
It's not in the same building?
That's a different building.
Right.
It's next door to this.
Yeah, this one's next door to that. Okay. So, just describe your project, then, I guess, would perhaps...
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Sure.
Uh, I think so, yes. Lights on. So, two vacant buildings that really have fallen on hard times. This is still part of the hangover from a failed Renaissance Square. First-floor tenants were existing prior to the announcement of Renaissance Square. And when that came about, everybody thought they were going to lose their building. Everybody thought it was going to be taken by eminent domain. People stopped paying their taxes. People stopped repairing their buildings. Tenants decided to move out. I mean, that is really the rule of what happened to this section of Main Street. And when Renaissance Square failed, people were... Building owners were left without tenants, without any income-producing opportunity to maintain their buildings. And these two buildings, side by side, 186 East Main Street, is a very narrow building, three and a half, four-story building. And 190-194 is a six-story building. And two of the older buildings in all of downtown Rochester. They date back to the late 1870s and have a rich history. Our plan, like a lot of our projects in downtown, it's a thoughtful, mixed-use redevelopment of great buildings. These are going to be two of the most challenging buildings that we'll have an opportunity to work on. One of the buildings is literally, while the structure is strong on the exterior, the buildings are safe, but from an interior standpoint, we have really some dilapidation. I mean, the building's falling in on itself, but it's not in danger of causing any harm to anybody. The building is straight and strong, but the interior is really falling apart. So, we feel very thankful to be here and excited about the opportunity of putting together a very thoughtful, mixed-use development that incorporates... Both buildings will have a component of residential, market-rate apartments, mostly one-bedrooms, smaller. I don't... They're affordable in nature, just because the way they're designed, they're smaller apartments, so they really will appeal to everybody. We'll have some commercial space in the form of offices, and we'll have street-level restaurant retail space that we're looking to engage the street. Main Street's coming along beautifully. The timing is right, and we're engaged, some early discussions with some potential tenants, but we don't have any street-level tenants to speak of that are ready to sign a lease yet.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate your...
You're welcome.
...your comments. You're good? Okay. All right. Are there any further questions on introductory number 391? Okay, we have a comment from Councilmember Patterson.
Real simple, real easy. This looks wonderful. Thank you for making this investment, and I fully support it.
Okay. Hearing no further comments, I would accept a motion to consider introductory number 391.
Moved to consider?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye say aye. Motion carries for zero. Introductory number 392 is amending the zoning map for 5059 70 Goodwill Street, 17 Woodside Street, and a portion of 1991 Lake Avenue. This will also have a public hearing at 5:00 PM following the committee meetings. Are there questions on 392? We did have one question that was answered regarding a traffic study, and I think that question was answered, unless there's a further clarification required? Anyone? Okay, are there any other questions? If not, I would accept a motion to consider introductory number 392.
So, moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye say aye. Motion carries for zero. And introductory number 393 is amending the zoning map for 25 May Street. There will be a public hearing that will be held at 5:00 PM today following our committee meetings on this item. There were some questions on this one also that, I believe, were answered. Are there any further questions on introductory number 393? Councilmember McFadden?
Mine is a question, more a statement. This project is in my district. I had a chance to actually look at the site. I'm happy with the way the administration answered the questions, and it has my full support.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, there was a question, as we all know, the Planning Commission recommended denial. The question was, why? What was the issue that caused the Planning Commission to deny this? And perhaps, Margarita, you look like you're moving toward the mic.
Yes, the Planning Commission...
You sound like her.
Very quickly.
I'm going to just move over to you.
I believe the Planning Commission had good intentions. I think maybe the ideology of having commercial infringe on the residential maybe got the better of them this time. This is very different than Gold Street and different other projects. This is one property, and they were really staying true to the fact that they didn't want to see more commercial infringement there. But as you see, it was also a pretty split vote. I believe the applicant is also here. He's got a lot of support in the neighborhood. So, the Planning Commission really was just looking at it in terms of ideology and not letting commercial infringe anymore into the residential district.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Madam President.
Before you... Just for my own information in the future, it was a split vote, and it causes you to wonder whether if that one person had been present, would it have been a different outcome? Is there an appeal process, or does the applicant go from there to here?
There isn't an appeal process, only because the Planning Commission's a recommendation. They don't have the authority. Council has the authority. If they were the final say, there would be an appeal process. But since you have the ability to act whether or not you agree with the Planning Commission or to overturn them and to approve it, they don't need that appeal process. The applicant does have the right to withdraw the application if they don't want to pursue. In this case, I believe the applicant feels that he has the support needed to go forward, which is why he's doing that. So, it's not necessary, because council has the final say.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Hague?
I'm sorry to make you talk more. Could you share a little bit more? I know this was detailed a little bit in an answer to council, but how this does not fit the definition of spot zoning?
As I'm sure the law department can say more than I can, spot zoning is really the result of a court case that happened many, many years ago. Spot zoning in and of itself has to show that only one property owner, more than the public, is going to benefit from this. Since this is an established business, since there is already parking... Since this is an established business, since there is already parking, since the neighbors around it have come out and said, "We would prefer to see the parking off the street than on the street," this does not, in our measure, or probably even the law department, own up to spot zoning. There is much more of a public benefit by rezoning this parcel, since it's only one. It really actually evens out that C2 district, which should have been the intent. I think that in this case, even though it's only one property, the public benefit for providing parking off the street and in support of the residents around it really doesn't rise to the level of spot zoning. Just because it's one property doesn't necessarily mean spot zoning.
Thank you, and this is more commentary than questions.
That's okay.
But at some point in time, and I think we're making steps at doing this now, but at some point, we do need to, as a community, address our love affair with surface parking lots in this community. It's not the best use of land. It's not the best way to accommodate people to get around. It is what it is for now, but I, and I think we're doing things like Zagger, like our bike lanes. You know, I'm thankful that the Transportation Authority is starting to look at different ways to perhaps have our bus system work in this community after a very long time of being told it's ineffective. But nevertheless, we still have, you know, most successful, really successful urban areas don't have a plethora of surface parking lots and are often far more difficult to find a place to park, and they deal with it. Again, that's commentary, not question. I hope you feel better.
Okay. Councilmember Clifford.
Thank you. Just one thing, Marguerite, maybe before, before Tuesday, you don't have to answer this vocally, but could you just give us a summary of how many times council has overridden the recommendations of the Planning Commission, maybe over the last three to five years? Thank you.
Rochester.
Okay. I do have one other question that is written here. The question is, the lot appears to be 4,720 square feet. Is that considered unbuildable? And if we don't do this, could it be anything else, for example, infill with a new home? Okay.
If that weren't to happen, there's a lot of other things that can happen. It's also going to be in combination with the lot in the front, so there's a lot of opportunities in and of itself, maybe not, but I don't really like the term "unbuildable." There's a lot of ways that you can get around and actually put something on there. So there really are very few unbuildable lots in the city. That's large enough that something else could happen. However, where it's located and the fact that there is also parking right across, maybe not the most perfect location for something other than parking, just my commentary.
Okay.
But it could happen.
Thank you.
So Dana, one other thought.
Yes, Councilmember Spahl.
So in addition to Adam, who is a district councilperson, being supportive, Jerry and Joe Macado are very supportive, and that means a lot to us, because they've been watching that corner. So I think this is a great, great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Just in response, or this isn't a complete response, but to Councilmember Clifford's question, I, prior to serving on city council, I did serve on the Planning Commission for seven years, so I know that it is relatively rare for a Planning Commission recommendation to be overturned, but it is, as Marguerite Perrino stated, it is the expectation that Planning Commission, and we always knew that, we're making a recommendation to city council, but city council actually has the final decision. So it was very clearly understood by myself and the other Planning Commission members that our, our decision was not the decision, it was the recommendation. So I don't think there's an issue. I don't think their feelings are going to be hurt or anything. Okay. Oops, sorry, another question. Questions just keep coming. Are there any, are there, I'm sorry, are there no plans for the front half aside from landscaping? Sorry, I think your mic turned off.
Hi, my name is Peter Silos. I own the property, and at the moment, there are no plans to develop the front portion of the property. What we anticipate happening is that we eventually will demolish that building and landscape it in a manner that will make it appealing or attractive for use for that corner that realistically has no tie to the parking that we're asking for this evening. So whatever, whatever development goes there will have to be, obviously, approved by planning and zoning and such, and it'll be a fit that is consistent with C1 commercial.
Okay. Sorry, one more question, Mr. Silos. Will there be an entrance from May Street and Stewart Street for this parking? So, for example, there's currently a parking lot that appears to be at the 24 Stewart Street location. Will these parking lots be connected, and will the entrance just be from Stewart, or will there be an entrance from both streets?
From both streets. We will remove the fence that's there now at the end of 20 and 24, and then screen it, fence it, landscape it, and put curbing similar to what we have at 2024 Stewart Street.
Okay.
So ingress and egress will be available there. We'll plan on having space for snow removal or...
Storage, snow storage. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Not seeing any more questions on introductory number 393. I would accept a motion to consider.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Motion carries for zero. That concludes the business of the Business and Economic Development Committee, and we stand adjourned.
Due to the voice-impaired chair of this committee, she has asked me to orchestrate the Neighborhood and Community Development Committee. I would call it to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ortiz, can raise your hand. Councilmember Conklin?
Here.
Councilmember Clifford?
Here.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
President Scott?
Here. And I should note, we are joined by everybody else. Introductory number 394, authorizing the sale of real estate. Questions on intro 394? If not, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
That's a second, isn't it?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Moving seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Carries five, zero. Introductory number 395, authorizing the acquisition of 21 Kensington Street. Questions on introductory number 395? If not, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Introductory number 396, approving appointment of the Rochester Environmental Commission. Questions on introductory number 396? A motion to adopt?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Carries five, zero. Introductory number 397, appropriating funds for the Emergency Assistant Repair Program. Questions on intro 397?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Carries five, zero. Introductory number 398, authorizing appropriations of community development block grant funds and amendatory agreement for the target housing rehabilitation and the window replacement programs. Questions on introductory number 398?
Moved to adopt.
Is that a second? Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Carries five, zero. Introductory number 399, appropriating funds and authorizing agreements for the owner-occupant rehabilitation program. Questions on introductory 399?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Carries five, zero. Introductory number 400, authorizing an agreement and appropriating funds for the 2018 Rochester citywide housing market study. Questions on introductory number 400? I have one. Will a study on tiny houses or small houses be included in this marketing study?
Yes, we'll be looking at all housing choices and different development, but specifically, I made sure that they will be looking at tiny homes and...
Because I'm going to come back and speak to council about that.
Okay. We know, we know where you are, but no, I mean, in all seriousness, I don't know where Doreen is, but I definitely said we need to make sure we look at tiny homes and small homes, because it comes up, you bring it up, and we're seeing across the country different housing choices, and we need to, we need to look at everything.
Thank you. Additional questions on introductory, Councilmember Clifford?
Thank you. And I may have read this wrong, but do we anticipate that the study will be done within six months?
Yeah, the contract ends in April, Doreen? What, June? Excuse me, June.
Okay. So the hope is, that's aggressive. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions on introductory number 400? If not, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Moving seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Passes five, zeros. Oh, now I get to ask this again. Introductory 410, authorizing agreements and appropriating funds for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. It's deja vu all over again. Questions on introductory number 410? If not, a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, say aye. Carries five, zero. Any additional questions to come before the committee? If not, the chairman thanks you. Meeting adjourned.
I'd like to call the Parks and Public Works Committee to order and have the clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Hague?
Here.
Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Spahl?
Here.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Introductory number 401, authorizing official map amendments related to the Elmwood Avenue College Town Cycle Track Project. A public hearing to be held at 5:00 p.m. after the committee meetings. Any questions on 401? If not, do I have a motion to consider?
Moved. Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye passes five, zero. Introductory number 402, authorizing agreements and appropriating funds for the Main Street Streetscape and Pedestrian Wayfinding Phase Two Project. Any questions on 402? Commissioner, I have a question for you. Is there anything being done with the bus shelters in this, in this area?
Well, that's a question that we are entertaining with the RGRTA or RTS on the need for either refurbishing that shelter, or those two shelters there within that, that area, or replacing them with their traditional shelters. We don't need to have the same type of shelter that we had in the past there because of the transit center.
Okay.
So that's part of our discussion. That will be part of our discussion.
No, no promises made, but other than a promise, you're going to continue talking to them about the need?
Absolutely. We need to either refurbish or replace.
Okay, thank you. And any additional questions on 402? If not, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say aye. Passes five, zero. Introductory number 403, authorizing an agreement with Northeast Area Development, Inc. Any questions on, on 403?
Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say aye. Passes five, zero. Introductory number 404, authorizing an amendatory agreement with the Village of Lima and the Town of Lima Water District Two and amending the municipal code with respect to wholesale water rates. Any questions on, on 402? If not, do I have a motion to adopt?
404.
I'm, I'm sorry, oh, 404, thank you, Councilmember.
Some moved. Second.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, say aye. Passes five, zero. If there's no additional business to come before the committee, we are adjourned.
I have one question.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, I meant to ask the question. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Jones and his staff. I was at the unveiling today of the canon, the 1918 canon at Washington Square Park. The park is looking lovely. You and your people have done a really nice job with that park. It's looking better than I've seen it look in years. Thank you.
Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember McFadden?
Here.
Councilmember Clifford?
Here.
Councilmember Hague?
Here.
Vice President Miller?
Here.
President Scott?
Here.
Introductory item number 405, authorizing agreements and funding for the Comprehensive Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Program. Are there any comments or questions?
I have, I have a question, and this is either for our chief of staff or council. Do I need to abstain on this item because of Highland, Highland Family Planning's relationship to the University of Rochester? Or is it more disclosure?
Give me, give me the context of your question again.
Since Highland is part of the University of Rochester Medical Center...
Right.
...structure, and I worked for the University of Rochester Medical Center structure? I didn't know if I...
I guess the question is whether, you know, your duties have anything to do with, you know, this particular facility or this program.
Generally, no.
Okay, so I think you just disclosed that case.
Okay. Sorry for not asking that ahead of time.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Introductory item number 406, authorizing an agreement and funding for the Motor Vehicle Theft and Insurance Fraud Prevention Program. Comments, questions? Councilmember Conklin?
Thank you. And I should note that as the police department has told us they will keep this data attached to everyone, we just received it, so thank you. One of the things in there is reduction of auto theft insurance fraud. I do know that the police department has been using, I don't know what they call them, decoy cars, to have somebody attempt to steal them. How effective has that been, and how often do you employ it?
I don't have how often we deploy. We try to keep it out most of the time in different places. I know when I was in Clinton's section, when we would have car break-ins in certain areas, we would put it out. It was extremely helpful. The scout car is what we call it, and it really, not only did it help us catch people, but it also, it's a way to show the neighborhood that you're there for that.
Right. It's been, it's been used in the Cornhill neighborhood very effectively. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh-oh, I think this is...
Uh-oh.
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 This is not good. This is not good at all. Okay. There is a question here that I'm asking on behalf of my esteemed colleague. The second paragraph of the transmittal talks about the deployment in high-theft areas, increased investigations of insurance fraud, and the question was specifically, how and
increased investigations of insurance fraud, and the question was specifically, how and with whom do we coordinate with, for insurance companies? Do we coordinate with insurance companies at all in terms of the investigations?
Investigator Paul Friday will coordinate with insurance companies as far as the theft, but exactly who, I'll have to get that answer for you.
Okay. And then the second question has two parts. What have been the tangible results of this recurring, reoccurring grant, and has it translated to any cost savings, and if so, where and, and how?
I think the tangible result is, it's definitely resulted in more cars being recovered and, and more people stopping theft, but as far as cost saving, I'll have to get that answer also. I'm not sure how we qualify that.
Okay, so do we have any idea roughly how many vehicles, if any chance, have been recovered? Any idea?
I don't have that number, I'll have to get it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 407, authorizing, authorizing a professional services agreement for pre-employment psychological testing. Comments, questions? I'll entertain them right now. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 408, authorizing agreement with the County of Monroe for the grant for improving criminal justice response to sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. Comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Int introductory item number 411, authorizing agreement for text to 911 services for the emergency communications departments. Comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the committee? Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot I had this green sheet in front of me. Int introductory item number 384, authorizing agreement with the Rochester City School District related to school resource office, officers. Do I have a motion to adopt?
To discharge.
We're discharging this.
Discharge.
It's adopt.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So moved.
What do you mean, Adam's right? I was born right.
I was saying it with, I was saying it with Adam... No, you didn't hear, the tone of voice was, Adam was right.
No, it was like a surprise. Any other comments or questions besides the fact that I'm always right? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the committee? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Well, now can, we'll now conduct the public hearing for the items that we covered earlier. The meeting will come to order, and the clerk will call the roll. Councilmember Clifford.
Here.
Councilmember Cochrane.
Here.
Councilmember Hague.
Here.
Councilmember McFadden.
Here.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Spahl.
Here.
Vice President Miller.
Here.
President Scott. Here. Ask the clerk to begin the hearings, please. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending city charter section 6 dash 71.8 with respect to the Coldwater Veterans Exemption from Taxes. Introductory number 388, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. If there are no speakers, that hearing is closed. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending city charter section 6 dash 71.9 with respect to exemption from taxes for persons with disabilities and limited incomes. Introductory number 389, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. If there are no speakers, that hearing is closed. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, authorizing an application and agreement for grant, for a grant under round five of the Restore New York Communities Initiative. Introductory number 391, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. If there are no speakers, that hearing is closed. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending the zoning map for 50, 59, 70, Goodwill Street, 17 Woodside Street, and a portion of 1991 Lake Avenue. Introductory number 392, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
Sam Spoto, Maplewood Neighborhood Association.
Sam, is your mic, is the green light on?
Yeah, green's light on, but...
Pull, pull, cut that mic down a little. Thank you.
That's the first time you've ever said that I was quiet. Sam Spoto, I'm the president of Maplewood Neighborhood Association, have been deeply involved in this process. I grew up in the Maplewood, I've lived here all my life, and I actually used to live on Christian Avenue, which was right near this project, and the one big thing about the area was, it used to be houses and a garage, and those were changed when Kodak needed space, and they put in parking. Now, if anybody remembers 415, 430, coming out, coming down May, Ridge Road, Dewey Avenue, Lake Avenue, when the Kodak people were getting out of work, it was crazy. Now, they're going to re, take care of this property and put, put it back to housing, and this is, I mean, this, from what I've seen so far in the plans and the drawings, it's awesome, and it'll do a really great job for the, and it's like a bandage that isn't a bandage, but more of a medication, because it's going to start building up the neighborhood again, because the neighborhood hasn't died, but it's just been static, and this is the thing that's going to help get it back, and maybe we can get money for the people on the buildings on Ridge Road there, that, because that'll be part of it, too, with all those businesses will want to come back to the area, because they all left. I mean, all my three favorite buyers all left. That's all I have to say, thank you so much.
Are there any additional speakers?
Good evening. My name is Tom Doherty, I'm the president of the West Ridge Road Business Association. We extend from Lake and Ridge to Ridge and Mount Reed Boulevard. All our members are really grateful, and I hope the city of Rochester is too, to see the new crown jewel of the city of Rochester come back alive. With Kodak's support and your backing, this is going to be a wonderful project. All our members are in business, they all support this 100%. Anything you can do to help West Ridge, the Maplewood District would be greatly appreciated. We've been waiting for a long time since Kodak's demise, and we're all grateful, and I'm sure it's going to help everyone in the city when this comes back alive. Thank you very much.
I'm Sally Campbrath, I own Rehouse Architectural Salvage on West Ridge Road. This development would be kind of kitty corner across the street from us, and I think it's going to be a fantastic development for the neighborhood, and again, especially for the businesses that are located right behind that location. I could see some, you know, very positive things there, so I would hope that you would vote to change the zoning so we can go forward with that. Thank you.
Rocko almost beat me there. John McGinnity, my family's owned a business there, McGinnity's Restaurant, for 45 years. We're trying to do more around there as best as we can. Times are tough out there, but we're doing great, but we'd really like to have this project, anything we can get it to go quick as possible would be greatly appreciated by my family. Thank you.
I don't think I could beat his gravelly voice, but I'm going to try. I'm Rocko DeStefan, I'm the vice president of the West Ridge Business Association. We highly support this project, we think it's a great thing for the neighborhood, we need to stand behind Kodak and bring the neighborhood back. It's, it's been going down, and this would definitely help it bring it back up, so we would appreciate all your votes. Thank you.
My name is, my name is Tim Palmer, and I am an employee of Kodak, and I work at Eastman Business Park. I'm also owner of a home in Maplewood and a member of the Maplewood Neighborhood Association Board. I'm really pleased with the project that is being put forward by Pastone Development. I think it's going to be a great starting point for the redevelopment of the east end of Eastman Business Park and allow us to build momentum that's going to carry over into other parts of the development process as well, so I hope that you can give us your support tonight.
If there are no additional speakers, that hearing is closed. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending the zoning map for 25 May Street. Introductory number 393, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard.
Good evening again, my name is Peter Silos. I own the Distillery Restaurant and Pellegrino's Deli Cafe, and we've been in business at the distillery for over 38 years, under the same management, in Pellegrino since 1999. The former Westwall Floris property, as you may recognize, has fallen into disrepair and hard times, and when they offered the property for sale, I decided to explore that to see what I could use it for, because it was adjacent to my existing property, and so the most suitable fit for the two lots that are on May Street, I thought would be to expand my parking that will enable me to get some of the employees and some of our customers onto addition, you know, parking, because during busy times, people circulate around the area, if they can't find a parking space, they, they continue on to someplace else. What has compounded this in recent years, the parking situation I'm talking about and the congestion, has been, you know, the further development of College Town and the University of Rochester, and many of the employees now park on these side streets, which does not leave a lot of room on the streets for, where formerly some of our customers and employees park in addition to the existing lots. So, we, we visited the city planning and zoning folks, Xena and Jason, we asked for guidance and direction on the best way to accomplish this, and, you know, Jason suggested that we rezoned 25 May Street into C1 to be consistent with the other lots in the area to sort of close the gap on, on that area of May and Stewart Street. So, we, we took his direction and we made application to that, you know, to, to accomplish that. So, I do have some pictures here to, because sometimes...
30 seconds to wrap up, please.
Okay, if I can just pass some pictures to the show you, the existing additions. That's the existing parking, I got three of them to pass along.
Okay.
And then this is directly behind it, what we propose to add, to add the additional parking, which we, which we sort of fit into the plan, and then this is the existing Westwall Floris. By the way, can I have a last...
I think we're all set.
This one shows that this has already been done further on Stewart Street and May Street.
Okay, we're all set. Thank you. Thank you. These are copies.
Hello, I'm Patrick Justo, and I have a business on Mount Hope Avenue, been there for over 30 years. I also own property in the area, Stewart Street, South Avenue, Mount Hope Avenue, Highland Avenue. I have residential property that I've owned for over 40 years. I've known Peter for 45 years, I've known him since he's, I know he's been in business there, successful business owner at the distillery for almost 40 years, and, and also he's been president of the business association, so I know him pretty well. And one thing about, not only is he a successful businessman, he cares about the neighborhood. The neighborhood is impeccable, if you go around the neighborhood, it's, it's a beautiful area, and I'm in favor of, of his proposal, to put a parking lot in there and, and do this, knock down this corner and whatever he endeavors to do. I've reviewed his plans, I think it's going to better the area, and, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name's Jeff Sonstein, I'm a retired pro from RIT, I live across the street and a couple of doors down the block on May Street from this proposal. I testified against this at the planning commission meeting, I filed a little one page of email to them, I won't bore you with the same stuff. I, I just, I want to encourage you to pay attention to two things, and, and the reason is because we chose to live in this neighborhood. We, when I moved, when we moved here, when I got recruited to teach at RIT, we moved here, we deliberately chose to live in the city, in a mixed-use neighborhood, because we wanted that kind of life. My colleagues quite frankly thought I was nuts, and urged me to move out to the Burbs. We have never regretted that, we really like this neighborhood, we've been there for like about 15 years, maybe a little bit more. I want to discourage you from approving, turning R1 light-density residential into C1 in the long run, who knows what's going to happen, commercial. It's not going to be good for my neighborhood. The neighborhood is under pressure from the success of, development pressure from the success of the College Town project, and I would urge you to be really, really careful about rezoning that creeps into the neighborhood's residential areas with commercial, and in particular, I got to tell you, turning R1 light-density residential into commercial for the sake of expanding a parking lot strikes me as just the opposite of smart growth, and I really want to encourage you to go along with the planning commission's recommendation and turn this down. It, it seems like really, it will be good for a business in the neighborhood, but it will not be long-term good for the neighborhood itself and the folks who live there. Please don't misunderstand, I like having a block where we've got a commercial anchor at each end, we've had that for a lot of years. Light impact on the neighborhood is just fine, a parking lot is not, and thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Must be tall here. Hi, my name is Cosmos Krasidas, I own property at 301 Oxford Street, I've been a resident for over 25 years. In recent years, I've happily seen new development in Rochester, and I want to thank the council for bringing Rochester back. With the influx of residents moving back to Rochester, one thing that's gravely needed is additional parking for businesses... is additional parking for businesses and visitors to those areas. It keeps cars off the streets and allows municipalities to efficiently operate services to keep Rochester clean and safe. Peter Silos has operated a successful business that is clean and kept up to date, which adds positive appearance to the area neighborhoods. In fact, you know, I've witnessed him walking across the street and picking up trash that is blown on the streets, so, you know, that's what type of neighbor he is, and that's how much he cares about the area. I don't see too many people picking up trash as they're walking across the street. He does that. His motto at the distillery is, "You're a neighborhood gathering place," and it is. I don't envision this development will adversely affect appearance in the area. In fact, the plans I've seen will add to the area and to the beauty. Currently, you have a, you have a property that's in disrepair. You have a lot that is overgrown and not groomed. I think, from the plans I've seen, it's going to actually bring beauty back to that area. Thank you very much.
If there are no other speakers, that hearing is closed. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, authorizing official map amendments related to the Elmwood Avenue-Collage Town Cycle Track Project. Introductory number four oh one, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. If there are no speakers, that hearing is closed. Pursuant to law, a public hearing will now be had on the following matter, amending city charter section six dash seventy-one point two with respect to veterans' exemption from taxes. Introductory number four one four, any persons desiring to speak in reference to said matter will now be heard. If there are no speakers, that hearing is closed. That concludes our public hearing for this month. This legislation will be voted on at our meeting on Tuesday, November thirteen, fourteen, next Tuesday. Thank you for coming.
And let them know that we're going to work as a community and see how we can help out.
It's also a classical, teachable moment. You know, we're working here with empathy, with collaboration, with so many good, positive traits that are leading towards the culminating activity, that it's a teachable moment, and we have to grasp those, whether they be glorious or whether they be disastrous, and use them to build our future citizenry.
Brendan, why is it important for kids to help out?
All right, we have a winner in our science challenge. Hello, Carol?
Hello.
Carol, what was-